Good evening, Winthrop, and welcome to Town Council meeting of July 21st, 2020. We are having a remote meeting with each person calling in from their own home. And this meeting will be shown on WCAT live with this remote situation. And it will continue to be shown over the course of the week by WCAT. To call in and join the meeting tonight, the number is 312-626-6799. And once you call in, the ID number is 849-241-21157. Right, that will be used for public comment. There's no public hearings tonight, so public comment both times, I will repeat that number. I will now call the meeting to order. Would you please have a roll call?
Councilor Jarrow.
Here.
Council Flockhart.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Farino.
Here.
Council LaConte. Vice President Letery.
Yeah.
President Boncorry.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilor Honan, would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
If you have the flag, I have one here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Council Honan. Could I please have a motion to accept and approve the minutes of the July 7th, 2020 meeting? Motion. A motion by...
I have a comment. I have a comment.
Hold on a sec.
I have a comment.
Make a motion. Motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Council Flockhart.
Okay, on page two, under Committee Report, in the almost last sentence under Public Safety Committee, after the word "Sunday," change the word "with" to "during." And toward the end of that sentence, after the word "surely," change the word "people" to "association." I think that changes the meaning a bit.
Okay, I have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other amendments? Any other discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, please take a roll call to accept the minutes.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Letery.
Yes.
President Boncorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes are approved. Under general information and recommendation, we have some citations to be given out. And I will read one of them and then point out who the others are. And the first one reads, "Town of Winthrop, Town Council Citation. Unfortunately, we can't do this in person and hand these to the people because of the COVID restrictions." It says, "Be it known to all that the Town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offer its appreciation to Michael Rinaldi of the Conservation Committee. On behalf of the residents of the Town of Winthrop, we extend our most sincere gratitude for your guidance on the Conservation Committee for the past several years, and wish you well on your resignation, and we offer you nothing but the best in all your future endeavors, given this 21st day of July, 2020, at Winthrop, Massachusetts, signed by Philip Boncorry Esquire, Town Council President, Town Council Members Rich Farino, Precinct 1, James Letery, Council Vice President, Nicola Conti, Precinct 3, Barbara Flockhart, Precinct 4, Peter Christopher, Precinct 5, Stephen Ruggiero, Precinct 6, Tracy Honan, Councilor-at-Lodge, and Robert DeMarco, Councilor-at-Lodge. There was a similar citation for David Staciio as past Chairman of the Planning Board. We offer him congratulations, nothing but the best in his future endeavors. And to Vincent Zapula of the Planning Board, we offer you nothing but the best of all your futures endeavors. And finally, to Joseph Clark of the Board of License, we wish you well and we offer you nothing but the best in your future endeavors. Thank you so much for all the work you've done for the Town of Winthrop over the many years." Okay. Under recommendations, I just want to point out, I know we're going to hear from Meredith early, but I want to congratulate the town because today there were no new cases in Winthrop. And I want to congratulate the people in town who somewhat listened at the last meeting when I was, I guess, chastising people for being so close on Euro Beach. Because as I went up to Euro Beach this weekend, it was still very crowded, but people were spacing out. I saw groups of 10 people and of 8 people, but there was some space between them. So again, please, if you're going to the beach in this heat during the week, week or weekend, please, wear a mask to the beach. When you're at the beach, don't congregate in groups of more than 10 people. Stay 12 feet apart in your groups. And try to wear a mask if you get closer. You're still in a COVID situation. Thankfully, we did not have a new one today, but we've had many new ones since our last meeting. Okay. Moving on, the public hearing. We have no public hearing today, and I will now open public comment. Public comment number again is 312-626-6799 with an ID number of 849-241-21157. I see we have 30, 44 people participating in the meeting. Is there anyone that wants to be heard at this time, Denise or Larissa?
I'll just ask that if anybody did want to be heard, if they could just use the raise your hand feature. And there's one caller that I'll click over to ask, I believe it's John Morgan. Mr. Morgan, do you have any public comment?
Yes, I do, Larissa. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is John Morgan. I'm in, excuse me, I'm in Precinct 4. I'd like to ask the council if they would consider a citation for Mr. Jerry DeFranza. Mr. DeFranza is a longtime resident here in Winthrop and has been an advocate for people with disabilities for well over 50 years. And I'd like to ask the council to consider a citation for Jerry for his decades of service. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry has worked long and hard on that committee. He's been before the council many times, and we surely will consider that. Thank you. Anyone else under public comment?
I don't see anybody else with their hands up.
Okay, under correspondence, I have a correspondence that came to me from Larry Powers today. And it is a corresponding that is talking about a boat that was stuck at Jale Island and light, and nobody could get to it. We had a Boston Fire, Marine Massport Fire, Coast Guard, nobody could get to this boat. But what happened is the Winthrop Harbor Masters found a way and Harbor Master DiCani took over control of the scene, and they were able to get that boat off of the land. And I want to thank Assistant Harbor Masters Dennis DiCani and Deputy Harbor Master Michael Chavas for the great work they did in doing something that no other seafaring vessels could do, and helped that boat and get the 2 people that were on that boat to safety. I thank them both exemplary Town of Winthrop employees. Are there any other correspondents?
We do have another correspondence. It is from Mark Chapdaling, the Chair of the Board of License. He could not attend the meeting, and he wanted this letter read into the record.
Can you summarize it?
Yes. He writes it to the members of the Winthrop Town Council that he has served on the Board of License. He's served with Joe Clark since 2018. He feels that Joe Clark has shown his ability to serve on the committee, and that he would like the committee to be extended, and he would like the decision of the Town Council to actually make Joe Clark put him back on the Board of License. It is with this hope that the Town Council reconsiders its decision and reappoints Joe Clark to the Board of Licensing. And his entire letter will be put on the record.
Okay, thank you very much. And I have Committee Reports. First is Finance Committee. Councilor Terry.
The committee has not met since our last meeting.
Committee on Rules.
Okay, yeah, so we met last night, the Committee on Rules, to go over the Human Rights Commission motion that we are going to be, that we're going to be bringing forth tonight. There were a couple changes that were made to the, to the proposed, to the proposal that was submitted, that was given to us. And we will be presenting that tonight in Old Business.
Is it under Old Business or New Business, Denise?
I guess it's under, it's under New Business now, but I thought we took this up in the last meeting, so I think technically it should probably be in Old Business.
Okay, is that the extent of the report?
Yes, that was the only item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we have reported the Joint Committee between Rules and Economic Development on the zoning? Council Honan, please.
We met last week. Jeffrey Morrison Logan from VHB put on the first of two workshops to discuss the zoning of the middle school site. We had very good attendance from the community. We spoke about the history of the site, zoning in general. We took a poll from the citizens, citizens poll, and then had a very lengthy question and answer session, which was very informative.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more thing. There'll be another, the second of the two workshops will be held sometime in August. The date is still to be determined.
Okay, thank you very much, Council Honan. The Miller Field Committee, Vice President Letery.
Thank you, Council President. Miller Field Committee met a week ago, Monday, the 13th, to discuss the fieldhouse and all aspects of that, including the golf shed, the dog park, which has been recently added, along with some miscellaneous items. The fieldhouse is 99% complete. We had hoped to have a dedication at the first football game in the fall. Now, I heard today, MIAA has delayed fall sports at least until mid-September. So dedication is still up in the air on that, as to when it will take place. We discussed the fieldhouse, and we discussed the golf shed and dog park. And thanks to Rich Chafuni and Stephen Callow, we've had some good feedback. There have been discussions with the, with the golf club. There has been some determination that the cost are higher than we had anticipated. So they're still working on that to see how we possibly could scale it back in some way, shape, or form. We hope to be, we are ongoing the project. We just hope to get that completed as soon as possible. The other discussion was with graduation coming up. I believe it's Thursday night, maybe. And, you know, we wish all the best to the graduates. It's unfortunate this year how different it has to be in some way, shape, or form. It's an event that I always love attending, and I wish the graduating class nothing but success in their future and hope that graduation goes on without hitch, and I'm sure it will. And that is all we had from Miller Field.
Great, thank you. Can we have a report on the WIN2030 Committee Meeting?
So I think I'm on that committee, and I attended the meeting. So essentially, what we did during this was we reviewed the, the results from the poll that we, the polls that were given at the last WIN2030 webinar with all the community members, and went over some of the, went over some of the results of that, and made some decisions around just having a final advisory committee meeting before we have the next open session with the public, so that we can have a little bit more, we can have a little bit more input about what the poll questions are actually going to be. And so we're also planning, trying to figure out through a doodle poll right now what the best date for as many members to be there as possible. So everyone should be on the lookout for another, for another event that we're going to be having. But we just need to figure out when that will work for the most amount of people.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other Committee Reports? Anybody else that has met? Hearing done?
Oh, yes. The Students Review Committee met last week on Tuesday. Just a quick update from there, we had a pretty productive meeting, I'd say. The three former council presidents were able to join us, and we sort of had a Q and A session with Council President Vecchia, Council President Gill, and Council President Tom Riley. Like I said, a very fruitful discussion took place, and their expertise on the matter was very interesting to hear.
Great. When is that next scheduled meeting, do you know?
Next Tuesday. So we're scheduled every Tuesday opposite the...
October meetings.
Yep, until the end of the summer.
Great. Thank you very much. Town Managers Report.
Good evening. I'm going to actually take my time here and first give it over to the Public Health Director, Meredith Hurley.
Okay. I'm sorry, I am just clearing up my screen so I can share it. Hold on one sec. Bear with me. Sorry.
So Meredith, there's a button down at the bottom of your screen. You hit, click on Share Screen. There you go.
Okay, hold on a quick second. There we go. Does that look okay? You guys are seeing my screen that says confirmed case?
We can see it, yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So definitely know that there's been some concerns in the community. So I'll kind of walk us back through what we have been seeing for, since early March, since March 16th, when we had our first confirmed case. So here it is that, you know, this is our case count by month. In March, we had 27 confirmed cases. April was by far our busiest month with 138 confirmed cases. We saw a decrease in May down to 61, 15 in June. And unfortunately, we have seen an increase of cases to 48 in July. So that represents, that represents July 4th up until this past Friday. We've had no new cases reported since July 17th. So those 48 cases were reported in 13 days. This is an interesting graph to kind of highlight the age groups confirmed cases by month. So as you'll see, in April, our, our case count with the, with the most amount of case counts, it was, I wouldn't say equal, but it wasn't as markedly sharp with youth. So we are definitely seeing through July, we've seen an increase in, in youth under the age of 20. So they represent, under the age of 20 represents about 50% of the cases that we've had in July. Whereas if you look in other months, they were kind of trending around 5 to 10%. So that is a dramatic shift in this month than in previous months. This, this graph represents the amount of tests that have been run on, for Winthrop residents up until July 15th. Tomorrow is going to be, DPH will release their next set of town-specific data. So, you know, this also shows that we, we had a very significant bump between July 8th and July 15th. About 25% of all folks that have been tested for COVID from March were tested during this one week of July. Which is a good thing because it, it was able to decrease some spread. So I've had a lot of questions, what's contributing to this? So obviously, increased socializing. We're experiencing quarantine fatigue. People are getting tired of being in their houses, not being able to go out. And couple that with the tests being reported in Massachusetts, it's providing a false sense of security. So community socializing has been a pretty historic thing in Winthrop around 4th of July weekend. And, and, you know, Phase 3 kind of, Phase 3 signals a significant reopening within the Commonwealth. So more people were moving around, were able to move around more. Capacity increased throughout scores. And also, I want to really highlight that the testing incidences have made this a huge challenge. So to give you some background on how testing happens, or, so MassDPH reports positive cases via their Maven system, which is a dashboard that public health officials across the Commonwealth have access to. So if somebody tests positive in the Town of Winthrop, they're uploaded into Maven, and then I'm traditionally, or I should be sent an email alert, an immediate email alert saying that somebody has tested positive. I would say 85% of the time that has happened during COVID, it was working. Sometimes it wasn't working, other, but for the most part, it's working right now. And then I go into my, my case files, and I'm able to see name, address, demographics, lab results, when they were tested, where they were tested, how long ago it'd been since they were tested, when the results were back, and when it was uploaded into the DPH system. Some testing sites will report results in 24 to 48 hours and automatically upload it. They have a direct line to DPH. Some testing sites are now experiencing a 10 to 12-day backlog on reporting. And there's one facility locally that they have yet to upload any of their test results into the Maven system. So this is, this is kind of like, this is, this is what contact tracing looks like. So this is a very small portion of the cluster that we are working on. So this is how quickly spread happens. You know, we've identified household clusters, we've identified community spread, we've identified what we call secondary and tertiary spread, meaning that it has spread beyond the confines of, of one social interaction or one social group or one household. We know that through some, through interactions here on 4th of July weekend, there are now cases traced positive in surrounding communities such as here in Chelsea. So this is just one small bit of how we work on the tracing that's happening. So to go back on the testing challenges, so Person A tests positive for COVID, and they have to isolate for at least 10 days. So then we go to their next outer circle. So those are their close contacts. We contact their close contacts and let them know that they've been in contact with somebody that they need, that they should be getting tested and, and need to quarantine for 14 days. And then dependent on how the test results come back for Group B, that's when we can make recommendations for Group C, what we call the secondary contacts. And this is why, the reason why the testing is so important. So for, say, this group of people, these 3 close contacts come back as positive, and say they were tested today, and they're confirmed positive tomorrow. All of their close contacts would be notified by Thursday. So we let those people know that, you know, they've been in contact, they should go get tested. Their family should get tested as close contacts, and they should not be going to work, to the gym, to any place. Where there's a failure is kind of when we see this delaying reporting. So say the same thing happens, close contacts are tested on the 21st, but this group of people, their results don't come back until the 31st. So all of these people that are green aren't notified of the need to quarantine for greater than 10 days. So they've been in the community. It really increases the load on contact tracing. And to the point that I've actually had at least one case in the last week that has already been off of isolation by the time their test results have come back. Unfortunately, that case was not informed by the testing facility of the need to quarantine, despite the fact that, that they were showing symptoms. So proceeded to go to work in a different community and, and stayed within the community instead of quarantining and isolating. Obviously, as Council President just went through how to prevent the spread, wearing masks when unable to keep 6 feet distance while in public places, hand washing or using hand sanitizer, big thing. Do not share food, beverages, utensils, your backyard barbecue, communal food is a high-risk activity. Keeping groups of 10 or less and avoiding indoor gathering. So ongoing concerns that we have would be potential celebrations following high school graduation this Thursday night. We really need people to understand the breadth of this. We are still working through a good amount of the tracking and tracing and connecting at this point. So our behaviors now and how this situation plays out or how future situations develop really impact our fall reopening plans, such as, you know, returning to school, moving to Phase 4, or even moving to Step 3, Phase 3. We will expect to increase cases if expansive socialization continues like we've been seeing. I'm also concerned that cases may be underreported due to inefficient testing and reporting at some of the local sites. And I spent a good part of the day working with the Massachusetts Community Tracing Collaborative to tailor an approach that, that would work well for my department, for the community, how to share information back and forth, and kind of giving them a rundown of, of Winthrop and some of our needs. So this, so I know that there's been a lot of, actually, let me go back. There's been a lot of discussion about enforcement and how do we do that? So the way the DPH has posed its local health is that they want us to use a matrix, meaning a verbal warning, followed by written redirection, followed by a fine of up to $300. And then for businesses, they can be, they can be served with a cease and desist. But really, the, the primary modes of enforcement and education are to inform of best practices and really trying to get the community behavior as a whole on board, which, you know, I, I think that the community is very nervous. And I think that they were rightfully nervous in the first 2 weeks of, of July. I'm definitely fearful of that because we haven't had cases reported since Friday, that people are going to think that, that we've, that we've stemmed this increase, which we may have, but I think that we have to have a serious consideration of what we've been seeing around town. You know, despite the fact that the, the parks are open, should we be having a, you know, an impromptu street hockey tournament? Probably not. No, like that, that can't be happening. So those are things that we're all working very hard on here. So those are things that we're all working very hard on um, here. And um, and also trying to, DPH is not really telling us how we should be doing this. They're leaving it up to um, interpretation of the guidance. Um, and it takes a long time to interpret their guidance and to go through all the channels of trying to figure out um, what exactly we have the right to do, what we can do, what we should be doing um, by all the different laws and regulations within the town. Um, so a couple of questions that I know people have asked me is why haven't we stood up a testing facility here in Winthrop? Um, I know that Melrose has done that, um, um, Melrose has done that. So I asked that question to DPH and they said, because we have so many testing facilities in the vicinity, they did not feel like um, it necessitated um, doing a, a, a testing site here in Winthrop. Um, the other thing people have been asking me is that there's been some inconsistencies between the state numbers that they're reporting for cases and what we report every day. So um, so I think that right now there might be an inconsistency of nine or ten cases. So as I go through every case that's reported, if people get tested multiple times, um, they've been erroneously assigned mul- multiple ID numbers when really they just needed to be tagged together into one. So for example, one case might show up three times as being positive when really they just need to show up that one time. And also people have moved from the community prior to being tested and confirmed positive. Um, and because their license still has their old address on it, that's why they're still showing up in our, um, our case count. Um, so that is kind of, so right now we, as of today, we've had two hundred and eighty-nine cases, twenty-four unfortunately have passed away, we've had two hundred and thirty-seven recovered and twenty currently isolated. Um, I will say that of the people under the age of twenty-one, a vast majority have been asymptomatic, um, which is great. But we're also worried that those that are asymptomatic may not have, have gone and gotten tested. So we're encouraging anybody that who has been uh, in close contact with a positive case to go and get tested and to do self-quarantine. I'm sure you guys have some questions for me.
Questions for Meredith? Counselors? Meredith, I think you're doing, doing a great job. Yeah, I'm sorry, you see that we had the influx of young people that, that were tested positive. And of course, I think it comes from the, the parties on the beach and uh, house parties that people have now learned to avoid for the past couple of weeks. And uh, it wasn't a good idea to have sleepovers and house parties and really congregate closely on the beach. I think parents got to their kids and let them know that because it was a lot less this weekend. Uh, as it resulted, we had, you know, no positives. I also want to point out, I talked to Al Legui, uh, who was our inspection service department. And he said that he has been doing uh, the COVID checks of all the restaurants. He did it both last Saturday night and this Saturday night. And he inspected every single restaurant to make sure they were following the COVID rec- uh, recommendations. And he said that every restaurant was safe, there were one or two, he said, chit space out, there were waiting lines, people waiting to get in. But other than that, everybody was uh, doing exactly what they should be doing in the restaurants in Winthrop. Austin, sorry, back to your report.
No, not a problem. Um, thank you, Meredith. Uh, just a couple of things to note on what she said. Um, keep wearing masks, keep socially distancing, um, try as hard as possible not to congregate. Um, I know it's hard, I know it's nice out. Um, one thing that Meredith did speak about that um, the chief is gonna come on as well to give a quick update. Um, it is difficult for us as a municipality to enforce. I just hope that everyone in town knows that. It's very hard for us to limit the number of people that are on the beaches. Um, we don't have a centralized parking location that we can enforce resident-only parking on. So we can't restrict the number of people that are coming on to beaches themselves. So we're gonna keep trying to uh, inform people to the best of our abilities concerning what our local rules are and the signage. Um, we're even going to um, get some additional uh, disposable masks to be able to distribute as well. Because um, although we cannot necessarily dissuade people from congregating on the beaches, we can at least try to help them be safe. Um, that's the route that we wanna try to take um, a little bit. So um, just the simple stuff still from the beginning that we've talked about with this in terms of the good um, hand hygiene and the masks and stuff like that, um, we just have to keep at it. So um, with that, uh, chief, do you wanna unmute yourself and give a quick update as well?
Sure, so we uh, continue to work with Meredith um, every single day. Again, the message to the parents is we cannot be the only ones responsible for the enforcement um, of the COVID nineteen rules. We're asking all parents and all adults to participate in the enforcement, making sure that children understand that they shouldn't be sharing vapes, making sure that they understand that they shouldn't be using dip and uh, chips and dip and stuff like that that can easily transmit um, the COVID nineteen from one child to another. So we, I think that they were getting the message, we hope that they will continue to reinforce our, our messages as we work on um, signage and new messaging that we could put out in an easier fashion to, for everyone to understand. So um, we're fully committed, we're still working as a team, even though we're not in one location at the EOC. Um, and, and certainly I'll transition from that into the uh, parking pilot program. So as of um, this afternoon at three o'clock, I've got an update. We have issued a hundred and fifty-nine warnings in the Point Shirley area. That's beyond the handicap spots at Euro Beach inbound uh, down to Deer Island. So we had the uh, last uh, ten, ten days, a hundred and fifty-nine warnings given out. I think it was very important to start with warnings. Um, it's an educational process, you never take an enforcement action and just jam it down people's throat. Um, you give them uh, enough opportunity to learn and discourage behavior first through, through the warning system and educational materials that have gone out from the town manager's office, press releases and the like. Um, probably only do another week of warnings and then I'll talk with the town manager and see if they wanna, we wanna transition at that point. Um, again, it's a, it's a learning tool, um, not just for the public, but also for the officers who have to enforce it. And certainly there was a little hiccup that we um, corrected and there was warnings given out during church service, which is excluded in the pilot program. So that um, has been rectified, everyone understands that there is no ticketing during church services down, down the Point Shirley. So that was one hiccup that um, we addressed. So um, we do have a com- a complaint um, sent by the harbor master, myself and the town manager will be meeting with him that um, the pi- pilot program is forcing more vehicles into the landing, which then is taking the spots for the boaters that he needs. Um, so we'll be working with him over this next week um, to see how we can balance um, the need of the people who wanna go to the beach versus the need of the boaters who have the primary and um, preference access to the landing to launch their boats through the uh, land management agreements that we have with DCR. So we'll probably um, have more cars being sent to Veterans Road. And again, we'll hopefully have signs that they can be given at a, a public landing that they can park on Veterans Road and they can taxi in, they can Uber in um, to Euro Beach that way. So um, certainly it's a good pilot program, I think we've learnt a lot in the last ten days. We'll continue to learn a lot over the next um, two months. And then hopefully uh, we'll have some uh, sit downs and discussions on what went wrong, what didn't go, go right and um, what went right. And of course, so you got some people who are requesting multiple and large numbers of parking passes now who have people coming to their house that don't have stickers. So again, I'll talk to the manager in the morning and see how we wanna address those particular people, uh, which is, I guess is a good thing because we can limit the number of parking passes they, they're gonna get um, for COVID nineteen purposes as well as the parking program. Be happy to answer any questions uh, from any council.
Question, chief.
And he got to Stephen, uh, councilor Jariel.
Good, thank you, council president. Um, I just wanna share that I, I received a piece of feedback from some constituents along uh, the streets perpendicular to Shore Drive. If there's been uh, anecdotally an influx of, of um, cars without visitors' passes parking on those streets. Um, and I'm just curious as to if you've received any inquiries as to that and um, how it may be potentially related to um, any signage that's down Point Shirley kind of dissuading visitors from parking down there. Maybe they're now um, parking up along the streets uh, Shore Drive to go to Winter Beach because Euro Beach isn't as accessible. Um, there's something that we wanna keep in mind, I guess, moving forward with this program is maybe some of these residual effects. I'm just curious if that's anything that you've heard as well.
So duh, uh, you know, obviously during the day, uh, councillor Jariel, I've received complaints about people taking spots on the side streets off of Shore Drive. Um, I can't attribute it to uh, solely the parking pilot program in the Point Shirley area because during the same week that we have received those complaints, Gloucester and other areas took drastic measures to discourage visitors coming to their beach. Um, so if we could have an overflow, people trying to come to us because um, of those other restrictions in Gloucester, Marblehead, Beverly. Um, so certainly um, I have personally seen people parking on the side street, walking over to the beach uh, when I'm out and about uh, during the weekend. Um, so it, it's certainly um, a concern when other people close down their beach, we do get an influx up to the Shore Drive area.
Sir, and uh, just one follow-up, wha- what is the current situation with parking on Shore Drive? I know that DCR lifted its restrictions on Revere Beach, but there's a sign still at the top of Winter Beach saying that it's residence only. I'm not sure if you had any further insight on that.
No, I um, went with the governor's order that uh, that parking restrictions have been lifted during, you know, throughout those beaches. Um, Mike Deloiso was reaching out today to DCR to find, give us a determination on whether or not uh, that parking only for residents is enforced, is still being enforced by DCR. Um, again, it would be enforceable by a DCR tag book and not by the winter parking ticket book, um, since we don't have jurisdiction on that roadway. Um, that's been an issue that dates back to two thousand and six, um, that we were trying to work on and try to resolve. Um, have the parking sticker program up there. Uh, but again, when, you know, sometimes you have unintended consequences. Um, like on Revere Beach where they just made, no one can park and they tow it and no one can go to restaurants, no one can go visit the people in the uh, St. George House. So uh, we gotta be very careful in how we, we need to tailor it to Winthrop and not have this was very broad sweeping change on Shore Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Austin, back to you.
Um, next up is uh, Steve Calla to give a quick update on the Center Business District project.
How, how you doing? Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
So um, quick update, we, we have uh, the water main and sewer main now completed on Woodside Avenue uh, between Pauline Street all the way up to Pleasant Street. They wrapped up the sewer main installation uh, right around midday today. They're now continuing sewer uh, on Adam Street between Woodside and Bartlett Road. That work should be finished up by the end of this week, uh, early next week. Uh, and then they'll start from the bottom of Bartlett Road and work upwards Pleasant. That particular sewer main portion will take about three weeks. It's, it's uh, one of the deepest points of the sewer system on the project. Simultaneously, we have a crew, a water main crew working on Pauline Street. They're lowering the sixteen-inch water main to accommodate the drainage that will go from the Lassen Ring parking lot up Pauline Street and down Hagman Road. So you'll have two different crews uh, working in two different areas. Uh, we will maintain uh, access points, uh, always maintain at least two. We're striving for three access points to the center during our work. Um, and that's really the, the, the three-week look ahead. Um, and then once the, the sewer main is finished on Bartlett Road, uh, should coincide with the, with the completion of the drainage work and we'll, we focusing more on water main to try to get the temporary bypass system, uh, all the water main and the temporary bypass system dismantled uh, before the cold we- weather sets in. That's essentially where we're at.
Steve, for the, for the work on Bartlett Road, is that road going to be shut down while you're doing that uh, work under the ground? Or is there still gonna be a way for traffic to get through?
Bartlett Road will require a full closure, it's uh, over ten feet deep, the sewer main work, um, which creates a little bit wider of a trench, uh, obviously uh, stacked trench box. So we won't be able to accommodate through traffic on Bartlett. It'll be very similar to what we did on Woodside uh, on the, the, you know, it's just the, the room isn't there to pass cars by.
And could you just give a general update about whether or not the project is currently on the timeline that we expected at this point?
It's, it's not, there was time lost on Woodside Ave between Pauline Street and French Square. Um, a lot of utilities in there, um, all uh, trenches were tidily influenced. Uh, so it, you know, high tides really created a, a inflow of water that had to be managed and, and it really cut down production. Um, so no, so they're currently uh, probably a month and a half behind their submitted timeline at, at the beginning of the project. Uh, there is talk that they will be making a formal request to the town manager uh, for winter work. That's, nothing's been promised, nothing's even been discussed. But um, and I don't even know that the weather, you know, cooperates. It's very seldom do we get two mild, milder winters back to back. Um, but there is work that could be done, there is drainage work that it potentially could be done through the winter months. Um, if the weather cooperated, but again, that's something that would be discussed formally, requested and uh, it would, I'm sure it'll make its way in front of you.
Thank you.
All right, did anyone have any other questions for Steve? Um, so the last thing that I have is uh, concerning the water sewer rate. Um, I had spoken about that previously, um, and I just wanted to make sure that um, the exact number was publicized. Um, that was... Excuse me, um... Taking way too long. Sorry about that. Uh, twenty-three sixty-five, excuse me, um, that's up seventy-five cents uh, uh, over the year. Um, the last time I talked about the rate, um, when we had the discussions during February of two thousand and nineteen, um, I committed then to uh, not uh, changing the rate um, until uh, we had a public discussion about it on, in June of uh, twenty twenty. Um, I made a quick um, note on there, um, there's gonna be FAQ sent out about it as well. Um, and um, a quick press release as well, just to explain where we're coming from with it. Um, but again, trying to maintain these small incremental changes rather than the big unexpected hops. So um, that's what um, we're gonna be billing off of for this year. And at this point, um, I'd make the same commitment that um, I won't be talking to you about water rates again until um, June of twenty twenty-one. Um, and with that, um, I'll take any questions or uh, give it back to uh, council president.
Anybody have any questions for uh, town manager?
Council president.
Austin O'Leary, yes.
Thank you, I have uh, three questions for Austin. Uh, first, can you give us an update on the library as far as um, everything going on there and when we can expect more uh, services being offered?
Um, right now, uh, through the library website, people can request materials uh, to be picked up. Um, we have been investing in the digital collection to make more materials available um, to the public. And um, we're exploring um, how we're gonna bring that building online. Um, so um, we have the timeline from the library director, um, that she, her plan that she put together that was presented in May. Um, it's a pretty good plan, um, what we need to do is figure out how we build that plan out. So we're still working on that um, in terms of retrofitting the building um, for people to be able to work in there. But um, we hear people a lot about the pickup and drop-off. So we're trying to uh, determine how to build that out a little bit, um, so we can service more people.
Yeah, we had talked about that a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting and I, I- Yeah, we had talked about that a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting and I I I was hoping that that would be something that would have been able to be accomplished, a lot of cities and towns have done it. So the the guideline should be out, is that something?
So we, we are doing it.
Okay.
We're, we're looking to expand it, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, uh second thing is Miller Field, that's just, you know, not blaming you for it, just totally unacceptable that. You know, the taxpayers paid ten million dollars for this field and with the express permission that they were going to be able to use it to walk around and. I I honestly don't see any reason why that's not capable of being happening in the morning.
In terms of the track?
In terms of the track.
So with the track, um we haven't been able to staff that yet, that's what um the delay has been. Um we generally, last year, staffed that with seniors doing the senior tax work off program. Um and some of the younger people from the Massport workers, um the Massport workers are only um recently coming online. So we've been working through uh getting that built up, um Larissa's been doing that with um Matt Serino. Um and she's been speaking with uh Lisa and Sean about that as well.
Well, this is something that should have been discussed in the spring, we knew the situation we were in, this is the third year that we've gone into this and it's just. To me, it's unacceptable that that isn't open. Uh and my last comment is scheduling, are you, are you back to a full work week at Town Hall?
Uh I've been working this entire time.
Are you talking about Town Hall being open to staff? Uh no, I'm talking about it, your schedule at Town Hall, are you available, your regular weekly schedule at Town Hall?
Yeah, I've been available my weekly, my regular schedule this entire time.
So you're at Town Hall on a daily basis from nine to four?
I'm at Town Hall a fair amount of the time, yeah.
And our department heads available to be working at Town Hall?
Um the essential ones that we've requested to come in because their um jobs are necessary to do onsite and can't be replicated remotely. Um and people have been working in shifts too, so it's been a big change over this kind of crazy time.
All right, thank you. All right, and and the same, I didn't wanna rush it, but you have kind of, some kind of estimate when Town Hall be ready to be opened? Uh regularly, I know it's probably September, but I wanna hear from you what you think.
So September is what it looks like in terms of having um the physical infrastructure built in. Uh my office now um in the area in front of Larissa has Plexiglas installed as well, the school department offices, we're having Plexiglas installed down there. Um as well, um there's Plexiglas going on some of the tables in Harvey Room as well. So that we would be able to um accommodate some type of in-person interactions. Um but again, this is not like, I want everyone to take caution with this, this is not going to go back to normal anytime soon. This is, basically, there are uh no good examples in the country right now of people doing in-person. Um business or going back to status quo, all of the places that have um tried to get back to that point have been unsuccessful at it. So um although we're opening Town Hall is a priority of mine, um I am terrified of having people congregating inside buildings anywhere. Um in town, um it's super scary to me, um I think it should be scary to everyone. Um you, you see what can happen with uh a weekend of people trying to enjoy themselves, how quickly this can spread. Let alone um us trying to conduct business as usual, so um I hear people on it. Um I wanna try to get people back to work, but um at the same time, um until we can really make sure that people are safe. Um we're gonna try as much as possible to replicate what we do and provide the same level of service. Um whether it is in the office or working remotely, everyone has been working and that's what. Um to kind of go back on the point of my hours in the office, um I've worked more hours during this time than I've worked in my entire career. Um the amount of calls that I've taken on weekends and having staff meetings on weekends for the majority of this outbreak. Uh let alone talking to uh municipal leaders from around the area and the state and federal level people. Um on my weekends, on nights, um this has been an insane anxiety inducing time for everyone who works at municipal government. Um so the idea that I'm just gonna be working out of my office while there's a pandemic happening, um wasn't ever really gonna fly with me, so. Um we've all been working extraordinarily hard to the best of our abilities, whether they, we were working inside of our offices or not, so. Um that's for me and for my whole staff that uh whether our butts are in our seats in our office or not, uh the jobs are getting done. Um taxes are being collected and we're still providing services to the community, so um that's of the utmost importance, keeping people safe, so.
Thank, thank you, Austin, Austin, one other question, um we had talked about it and I had, I just talked to uh. Julia Wallace about uh the Traffic Advisory Committee and we had talked about combining the. T S A C and the Traffic Advisory Committee rather than having two committees in town that book the traffic and sometimes don't get along. Uh the process to combining those, one is a committee of the. Uh of the town manager and one is, I believe, a committee of the town council. Being the, the traffic, uh what would you suggest in, in, in a way to co-join those, should they be under? You as the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee or should they both answer to the council?
So I think that um the Transportation Advisory Committee, um being that they're kind of losing some members. Um over the past few months, couple of years, um I think the Transportation Advisory Committee um should be disbanded. And um their kind of oversight should be placed with the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee. Um I do think though that the council should make the appointment to the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee um in the future. Um and that would be the main transportation um focused uh committee um that the council would appoint. Um that said, in the case that there are, say there's a huge influx of transportation projects in town. Um like one forty-five is getting cleaned up and Pleasant Main is happening at the same time and a bike lane or something like that, say. Say there's five projects going on at the same time, um in a perfect world. Um at that point in time, you may want to explore splitting them out and having one focused on safety and one focused on like infrastructure a little bit. Um but at this point in time, I think that um you all kind of putting it forward for the Transportation Advisory Committee to disband. Um in having the um remaining members be incorporated into the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee. Um I think that's a way forward and then I would kind of rescind my appointment authority to that advisory committee and give that to um the town council.
Thank you, I think maybe we could do that under new business and uh get, get this moving on, cause I do have. Julia coming off of that committee, cause I'm putting her somewhere else and I do have someone that would like to be on that uh T S A C, so. I'd like to do that under new business if we can. Okay, any other questions for Austin?
One, one more question, council president. Uh just on, I, I know um town manager and Steve have been in communication with a couple of residents on signage down at. French Square, just to make sure people understand what will be coming there, I, I'm sorry. Um what will be coming there next year or when this project is completed. Um and I, you know, is there a timeframe where we might be able to get signage up there to show people what it will be like in the future?
Yeah, so we just got the signage designed by Warden and Kern today, they were waiting on the image files from the landscape architect. There was some uh intellectual property discussions unfortunately that were happening because of that. Um but we got the right files for it, um I actually was talking with a sign company today and sent the files over. Um so that should be something that's produced and installed, um I would say by the end of next week.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just had one quick question, council president.
Just speaking of signs, I want to point out, someone contacted me about a sign that we approved, you know, parking sign on George Street. It hasn't been put up, so hopefully, Steve, we could get that put up uh as soon as possible, all right. Council Serino.
There were two issues that I had brought up to the council and they were referred to, I think, T S A C, one was the South Main Street. The uh possible parking on one side uh as a, due to the uh public safety issue of not being able to get uh. Safety apparatus down that street because of the parking on either side and also the speed limit in the town, we're gonna discuss possibly reducing that speed limit. Uh around the town, I was wondering if there's any progress on that, Austin?
Um I will check with Mike Deloiso on those two items, I can't speak to them off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Council Jerry, you had your end up?
Yes, thank you, council president, uh Mr. Town Manager, could you just maybe talk a little bit about? Um what it would take to uh get a building prepared to meet. Live and in person, like the steps that we need to take to get there, I think that that would just kind of help contextualize things. Here for the council and in the public, you know, cleaning and before and after, things like that, and what steps we need to do to get there as a community?
Sure, so uh one of the first things that we did was we bought um electrostatic cleaning apparatuses. Um they spray a fine mist um around a larger area to disinfect it um once it gets dry. Um those were super high in demand in the beginning of this, but um we have a couple on site now. Um so that takes care of part of what we talked about when it's uh the water droplets coming off of people if they're not masked. Um and we have been allowing people in the offices that they work in to work without masks on. Um so that there is stuff in the air, um in these spaces that people um are sharing. So that was one of the first things that we did, we have been installing um Plexiglas in um basically every office. Um in Town Hall where people could interact um both with other employees and the public. Um we're really making it so if you come in from the hallway into one of those offices. Um you can't really get much further than that at this point in time and that's just for the employees, that's not even talking about the public coming in. Uh beyond that, we still have to procure um things for our um faucets. And um sanitizing like stations to be installed, we also have to shift our desks to be a minimum of six feet. Um away from one another, so we are working through almost like a checklist of things of when we could procure them, which the Plexiglas took a really long time to get. Um the hand sanitizer we have distributed in like little hand tubs, we're trying to figure out more permanent solutions. Um we're still working on the bathrooms, um one thing that comes with upgrading any bathroom is ADA implications. If you upgrade a certain percentage of the bathroom and be, unfortunately, because of the state of our bathrooms. If you do too much to them, it could trigger them with the amount of money spent on it, so you have to, we're trying to figure out our way through. Procuring these materials, being able to use CARES money for it and then installing them. Um some of these things have changed, um we have been looking at um HVAC systems more. Um and filters and that's for our newer buildings, uh places like Town Hall, you can't really do that because we don't have a centralized air or heat system. So that's gonna be a lot trickier too for us to really wanna explore people working in shared spaces without masks on. Um because now with all the focus of it being an airborne um virus, uh that's gonna, it treats, it changes the way that we deal with it, so. We're continuing to learn about it and procure materials for it to the best of our abilities, um the filters and the HVAC stuff. Um gets pricey very quickly, um in all honesty, and it's something that does scare me a little bit in terms of Town Hall. Um because I don't, even my office, um I have like a window A C unit type of thing, I'm not sure how to necessarily. Uh circulate the air enough if I were to have kind of like my door open for meetings and stuff like that, so. We're trying to find our way through and we're following what science is telling us, so we're really letting Meredith get the most up-to-date information or what I can get from the state or the federal government. Um giving that to Steve and Rich to then kind of design out how we can best do it. Um we even brought up to, or Carla brought up today, um voting booths and how we're gonna keep the voting booths like disinfected and sanitized and. What we should be doing with that and stuff like that, so it's, it's hard because like every day, it's, how do we do something differently almost, so we're. We're working at it and we're trying, it's, I hope September, we can have more people back in the building, but we're also trying to work simultaneously to. Build up our phone system and our uh managed I T services so that um if the flu season hits really hard this winter. And we are in a situation that everyone needs to be working from home again, um we're gonna be in a stronger position as municipality to be able to perform a higher level of service. Uh based off of, um we, we learned some things this first go round, um we figured out these Zoom meetings and stuff like that. But we've figured out kind of our pain points with our financial management system, our H R plat, our H R system and our payroll. Um we're really figuring out what like our limitations of what we can do uh remotely through this, so. Um we're, honestly, it's like we're, we're learning every day, but I would say we, September is most likely the month that we're gonna be. Exploring, having people back in and I have um policies and procedures that I'm gonna be going over with department heads tomorrow concerning. Um what it's gonna look like when we do come back to the office, um I mean, we're, we're talking masks in the hallways, we're talking masks. Uh when you go to someone else's office and stuff like that and meetings not being um longer than a certain period of time and stuff, where this is, we're taking this seriously. But we, we have had unfortunately staff of the town um get this and we cannot have an in, um a spreading event happen. Um within, we're, we're the biggest employer too, unfortunately, like we, we have a lot of people that we interact with. Um just within the infrastructure, let alone dealing with the public.
No, and that, that's great information, that's important context to have, I think, moving forward. Um and just one other question, you, you did say that pickup and drop off and online orders are available at the library right now, correct, okay? All right, so how would someone do that, they would go online to the library website?
Yeah, it's on the library website, uh Diane Wallace had told me it's on the um website and again, that's the. Kind of loud and clear in terms of, I understand that's what the community would like the most um in the, in the immediate short term. Um so that's, that's what we're trying to um think through about how we could uh make that work better.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Hey, thank you, Austin, anything else for Austin, I'm gonna move on to the uh school committee report. Uh we had a school committee meeting on July ninth, uh it was a full attended meeting, of course, it was done remotely. Uh the main discussions uh were the plan for reopening of the schools, there are a lot of questions that are going back and forth between the state. Uh Health Department, the Education Department, our superintendent and the state superintendent. And uh it, it's going back in there, they're working on a plan for recovery, but every time they're working on a plan for recovery, they have to work out three different plans. One for fully coming back, one for remote, one for half remote, half for coming back. So it's, it's quite a job that a superintendent has been uh trying to keep up with this and uh. They are working on three different plans for whatever the state says we can do when they say they can do it. But in the meantime, uh they have been reestablishing residency, which they uh do every so many years. Uh we send out notices that everyone coming into the grade has to uh reestablish that their residency is in Winthrop so that we know who we have. And uh we get the proper uh aid that we should be getting for who we have. Uh M I A A has not yet decided they moved sports back again and uh the only good thing and the only good news. Is that uh they are going to have a graduation on July twenty-third, I think they have a great plan that looks like it's COVID. Uh free and safe to be spaced out, my major concern is about the parties after the graduation. And I'm gonna ask the parents that are listening now, no parties after the graduation, if you're having something. Have it in your own house with your own family members and don't invite cross uh your. Children's friends to your graduation party and don't let them go to the other kids' graduation parties, that's how this thing spread the last time. You, we don't want it spreading again between our high school age students, we don't want another spike of under twenties because of graduation parties. Congratulations on your graduation, enjoy it, accept your graduation, have, you know, a celebration at home with your family. But uh let's not have a big congregation of, of youngsters roaming the town together. Uh and going from house to house during this pandemic. Okay, uh old business, you wanna bring it up under old business, Peter?
Um sure, that works for me. Okay, so um like I said in the committee report, we had a uh meeting that was uh. For the rules and ordinances and that was uh this. for the rules and ordinances and that was, uh, this motion was, uh, reported out favorably. So I'm gonna read the motion, um, that was reported out. I will say before, um, I start, I will also be making an amendment to the motion just to make sure that the appointments for this committee will line up with the appointments for all the other advisory committees, um, that we will, um, that we have currently in town. So when I say August, I'm gonna mean June and I'll just make that amendment once I, um, once the motion is made, okay? So the, uh, motion that was recommended favorably out of committee was to amend the Winterup Town Council rules as follows, to add in Rule Nine, the following Section I. This rule establishes the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations. Uh, further commission or C D I C R. The commission shall consist of nine residents of the town who shall be called commissioners. Commissioners shall be appointed by the town council and shall hold office for a period of not more than three years with terms of office expiring on August thirty-first of an appropriate year in a staggered manner so that approximately one-third of the terms of the commissioners will expire each year. The term length of the inaugural commission will be determined by a random drawing by a method that is overseen by the town clerk. The town council may appoint additional non-voting associate members as determined to be necessary, which may include youth or persons who do not reside in Winterup but have a substantial connection to Winterup or to the Winter Public Schools. The commission may recommend to the town council candidates to fill vacancies. Now, you're in diversity and inclusion and for the Winterup community, the commission aims to support a welcoming environment by encouraging cooperation, tolerance and respect among and by all persons who come into contact with the town of Winterup, including residents, visitors, persons passing through the town, employers, employees and job applicants, and by advancing, promoting and advocating for the human and civil rights of all through education, awareness, outreach and advocacy. The purpose of this commission and the goal of the town shall be to strive for a community characterized by the values of inclusion. The town believes that inclusion will provide opportunities and incentives to all who touch Winterup to offer their energy, creativity, knowledge and experiences to the community and to all civic engagements, including town government, and that inclusion is therefore a critically important government interest of the town. Inclusion is defined as actively pursuing the goals of including, integrating, engaging and welcoming into the community all persons who come into contact with the town regardless of their race, color, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, disability, age, religion, creed, ancestry, national origin, military or veteran status, genetic information, marital status, receipt of public benefits, including housing subsidies or fam- family status, e.g. because one has or does not have children, herein Winterup is protected classes. In striving to achieve the goal of inclusion, the commission shall be guided by the following general principles. One, the foundation of the community is strong and positive, community relations among and between all groups and individuals in the community regardless of their membership in a Winter Public Protected Class. Two, the substance of a commu- of community is the recognition of human rights principles as applicable to all persons who come into contact with the town. Three, justice in a community requires at a minimum monitoring and enforcing civil rights laws as they apply to all persons who come into contact with the town. And four, commitment of the town to these principles requires vigorous affirmative steps to carry out the word and spirit of the foregoing. The commission will raise awareness of these principles and make recommendations to town officials on how to become a more inclusive community. The commission may provide the council with written recommendations on an annual basis. And from time to time, the town council may request the presence of the commission to discuss matters germane to the commission's soul. The town council shall seek a diverse and inclusive group of candidates for the commission, which may include youth. Candidates for commissioner shall be qualified for such an appointment by virtue of demonstrated relevant and significant knowledge, life experience or training. The composition of the commission shall include persons with the types of such knowledge, experience or training necessary to enable the commission to perform the duties assigned to it by this rule. All commissioners should serve without competition.
Good. Motion's been made, I guess, coming out of committee, so it doesn't need any second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to speak also.
Counsel Ferino.
Uh, there was just one item in there that I, I, I thought should be reconsidered. I had a nine-man commission or nine-person commission, excuse me. And I thought, um, we're, we're having such a hard time filling spots on committees and getting commitments. I thought possibly maybe reducing that to maybe five or seven. And if people wanna participate, they could be alternates. And I just think, uh, for inclusion and for, you know, uh, it may be popular this year or next year, but down the road, it may not cause as much interest and it may be hard to fill those nine spots. So I would just suggest maybe making an amendment to maybe seven members.
That a form of a motion? I don't hear a second if it is.
I'll second it. Good discussion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded for an amendment to change the amount of commissions from nine to seven. Anybody wanna be heard on that?
Once again, I just wanna say, uh, uh, Council President, that, uh, most of the committees in our town are seven. Um, and, uh, we have a hard time filling a lot of those spots, as you well know, more than anybody. And I just thought it may be, uh, for future preference that it be a, a lower number, that's all.
Council President.
Yes, Council Flockhart, is that you?
Yes. Um, I would like to keep it at nine, given the number of different categories for protected people that we're trying to cover with this commission. As it is, there's a lot more than nine. And so I, I would like to see them covered as much as possible.
I second Counselor Flockhart's, um,
Okay, thank you, Counsel Honan. Anyone else?
President Boncori.
DeMarco, yes, you have a discussion on this amendment?
Yeah, if anything, um, you know, it is the, uh, it is the Committee on Inclusion. So I think we should include as many people as we want. If ten people wanna be on it, let's have ten people on it. I mean, that's all, that's what it's about, bringing as many people together as possible. So, uh, I am, I am.
I'm happy with nine. Thank you. But we're not putting ten, I'm happy with nine. Is it, is, a- anyone else on the amendment?
Just a quick note on the amendment, if I may. Um, I, I just think that with, with nine positions, that allows us for flexibility. Um, you know, as, as you know better than anyone, not every committee is completely full. But I think with nine members, it allows for maximum flexibility. So it may not be full all the time. Hopefully it is. Um, and I think that just given the, uh, initial outpouring of support for this, I think that we shouldn't decrease the number of participants at this point.
Okay, I just wanna say there's been quite a bit of, uh, input and, uh, discussion about it. And even though this is the first night, a lot of applications have come in. Uh, if we have passed this, I am pointing of more than half of this committee tonight, if we do pass this tonight. Uh, but I, I still waiting and hoping that we get other applications, uh, from a more diverse group of people. And, uh, I got quite a few, as I said, that, uh, I'm considering right now to appoint. But, um, I'd like to see more diverse, uh, applications coming in. Okay, um, on the amendment, any, any further discussion on the amendment to change from nine to seven?
I would draw my amendment, uh, based on the consensus that I'm reading. So, uh, I would draw that amendment.
You draw the second, Counsel Terry.
Sure, if, uh, Counsel Ferino wants to withdraw, I will agree with him.
All right, that, uh, amendment has been withdrawn. Is there another amendment to change the date from August thirty-first to June thirtieth?
Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment, um, in the third paragraph of this motion to strike the word August thirty-first and insert in its place, June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, yes. Okay, uh, is there a second to that amendment? Second. Okay, a motion has been made, uh, to amend the initial motion approved by the committee, uh, from August thirty-first to June thirtieth to coincide with every other appointment. Uh, as they, all the other town appointments expire on June thirtieth of, of the, uh, year. Any discussion on it? Any discussion on the amendment? Any other discussion on this amendment? Hearing none? I will take a roll call vote on the amendment to change from August thirty-first to June thirtieth.
Counsel Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yeah.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel Ferino?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte? Vice President Lutieri?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes.
Amendment passes.
Okay. Now on the main motion as amended, I will open it to discussion. Uh, point of reverse motion, but let's have discussion, Peter.
Um, sure. So I just wanted to give a general overview to the community. Um, and I wanna ask for the council's support in, on behalf of this motion, uh, which is a product of really years of advocacy by many residents who have been aiming to make Winterup a more inclusive community. Um, and this commission is going to be tasked with elevating the conversation on issues of diversity and inclusion for all people who live in or in any way interact with our community. It will provide opportunities for prospective members to ensure that Winterup is the welcoming and diverse community that we all aim, hope for it to be. Creating this committee will send a clear signal to all that we, uh, to seek injustice wherever it may, to address injustice wherever it may live. We seek to have a better understanding of cultures different than our own and that we should look to identify ways that we can open our arms to the new. It also says that we are at a very minimum interested in adhering to civil rights laws and acknowledge that doing this requires affirmative action from residents and leaders in our community. The committee will be made up of nine members of the community who will be nominated in a similar way to how all other advisory committees in town are. Um, Counselor Ruggiero made an emotion at the Rules and Ordinances Committee last night to ensure that the inaugural committee's assignments will be made at random. The committee, uh, may also include non-voting members from people who are out, uh, from out of town who yet have a substantial connection to our community. And the council also has the ability to name members of the community who are under the age of eighteen, which may provide for a potential youth voice within the commission. The general principles that will guide this commission are as follows, that the foundation of the community is strong and positive, uh, that the foundation of community is strong and positive, community relations among and between groups and individuals, that the substance of the community is in the recognition of human rights principles, that justice in a community requires at a minimum monitoring and enforcing civil rights laws and that the commitment to the town of these principles requires affirmative steps to carry out the word and spirit of these principles. This, this commission will be specifically tasked with raising awareness of the general principles outlined in the motion as well as providing the town council with policy recommendations on an annual basis at the request of the council. The town council is urged to request the commission to present untimely matters germane to their work. I've spoken with many members of the community who envision this committee doing more in the future. And while the, I feel that this is a strong step in the right direction, there is much more that we can do. I hope that this commission will work to codify its presence in the charter and perhaps even expand its commission, the commission's powers by making it a policymaking body. It is timely that we are creating this commission at the same time that we have named our charter review group, and I hope we'll consider doing that. I serve on the Mass Municipal Association Counselors Association. And at a meeting last week, I asked if there were any other town counselors who'd worked on creating a group like this and nobody responded that they had. And I think that this speaks to the really groundbreaking work that we're doing here tonight. We currently have many more applicants than we do seats on the commission and that speaks to our community's willingness to fight for the noble principles outlined in this motion. I would like to thank the many people who've reached out in support of this commission over the past few years. Specifically, I'd like to thank the Group One Winterup, of which I'm a proud member. There is no doubt in my mind that without the work of its leadership, that this commission would not be up for debate right now. I'd also like to thank the council presidents and the town manager for their support in the creation of this commission through this process and all the counselors who provided feedback and support as well. I urge your support of this motion and all who can get involved in the success of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations to get involved. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please take a roll call vote to approve the, and establish the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations.
Counsel Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart. Counsel DeMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Christopher.
Yeah.
Counsel Honan.
Yes.
Counsel Ferino.
Yes.
Counsel LaConte. Vice President Lutieri.
Yes.
President Boncori.
Yes.
Mission established.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on on the agenda to appointments. And I have quite a few appointments to make. Oh, but prior to making the appointments, there was a motion coming from, um, town manager to disband the Traffic Advisory Committee and move its members, uh, into the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to disband the Traffic Advisory Committee and move the remaining members into the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. Any discussion on the motion?
Council President?
Yes.
So by just moving them in, how many members are you expanding the TSAC?
I believe there are only two members right now, uh, because Julia Wallace is coming off. And I am going to appoint one tonight, so that'll be three people that are added to TSAC.
Which currently has?
Currently has the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, the, um, DPW Inspector, John Ead and Mike DeLuise. So I think there's three, four, five, and this three would be eight.
Do you feel comfortable with an even number for a committee?
I would think, uh, we probably should have nine on it. But, um, let's see what they do when they get together. And, uh, if need be, we'll appoint an, another person to it at the next meeting. Austin, is it, was it, anybody I missed that was on that Traffic Safety Advisory Committee?
No, you hit the people that I'm aware of on that.
I hit all, the four, right?
Yep, the chiefs, Steve, Mike and, uh, Mr. Ead.
Okay. Okay, any, any further discussion on the motion?
Hearing none. President Boncori?
Yes, Counsel Honan.
Will this new committee, um, encompass everything that T A C did, you know, including, you know, bikes and walking paths and methods of transportation?
That's the purpose of it. Yes.
So, so one thing on that. It will, they will hit on some of those items. Um, that said, we anticipate some of the work product that they were working on to come from the Planning Department as well. So we think that many of the items that they were working on, um, will continue. Um, right now, um, some of that group is looking at, um, like a public art installation in the Center Business District, um, and repurposing some parking spaces there, wayfinding, those types of things. We're not gonna let those things go away. And even the bus signs around town have finally started getting installed after, uh, Julie has been working on that for my entire time that I've worked in town. So, um, there, we're gonna continue making progress on the things that are important to them and those won't fall by the wayside. And like I said, if larger scale projects come along that we need to have a separate committee or commission on, we can do that. So if we really wanted, um, explore building out, um, instead of the, um, bike share that the bikes were located everywhere, if we want more centralized locations and we wanna set up like a funding structure for that and things like that, um, we maybe would wanna have a new committee for that. But otherwise, uh, most of these items would either come up in this other committee, um, or they would be working through, um, the future like planning office.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the motion is to merge the Traffic Advisory Committee with the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee and have that, uh, report to the council. and have that report to the council. Have we no other questions? Please take a roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart. Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher. Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Luteri.
No.
President Boncory.
Yes.
I need the counters that the eyes have it. And the motion passes. Moving on to appointments. There are quite a few appointments to be made tonight as, as you've been aware now. All council committee appointments end in June. So every year there is council appointments that were three-year appointments ending every June. Some of them are reappointments and some of them are new appointments. I am going to pass the gavel to Council Vice President Luteri. Here you go, because I have a bunch of motions to make. And the first motion is for the cultural commission. I, the council president would like to reappoint Joey Ann Hillman and Larry Hantoon to the cultural commission. These are both reappointments.
There's two appointments by the council president to the cultural commission. Do they both expire at the same time, Council President?
Yes, these are two that expire this year.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Councila Frino, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart. Council DeMarco. Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please record a unanimous roll, Council President.
Okay, the next two new appointments to non-policymaking committees. The first non-policymaking committee is the Winthrop Airport Hazards Committee. And I have two appointments to that. And first one is Lori Stagnus, sorry, it's Lori Stagnus from Undine Avenue. And the second appointment to that is Kathleen Riley Capuccio.
Second the motion.
Okay, Council President, there's a motion by the Council President for two new appointments to non-policymaking committee, Winthrop Airport Hazards. There's been a second by Council Frino, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yeah.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Council President.
Okay, next appointment is a non-policymaking appointment to the traffic safety advisory committee. And it is Jeremy S. Mahoney Wright from Seven Maryland Avenue in Winthrop. And he was a recommendation from Julia Wallace.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to name an additional member to the TSAC. There's a second by Council Frino. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote, thank you, Council President, please.
Okay, I now have two appointments to policymaking committees. The two policymaking committees are the planning board and the conservation committee. I would like to appoint Julia Frank Wallace to Morton Street to the planning board and Mark Paulson of Villa Avenue to the conservation commission.
There's two appointments, motion to make two policymaking committee appointments, one to the planning board, one to the conservation commission. Is there a second on the motion? Second by Council Frino, any discussion on the two motions?
Yeah, Vice President Luteri.
Yes, Council Flockhart.
Are these replacements for people and have those people reapplied?
Yes, these are both, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I refer to Council President.
Yes, these are both replacements. The planning board, we replaced Dave Stesso last month, and I am replacing the, it's a pooler that left. So these are openings on the planning board. Michael Rinaldi and Norman Hyatt left the conservation committee. And last month, I appointed Joe Carrara to replace Norman Hyatt. And I am now appointing Mark Paulson to replace Mike Rinaldi. These are both people on replacements.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Unanimous motion, unanimous, Council President.
Yes, my next appointments are to the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. And I am appointing the following commissioners. Father Walter Conley Junior, who is the Reverend and pastor at St. Joseph's Episcopal Church. The next appointment is Anthony Williams. Rob Jacob has said, the next appointment is Nisaj Patel. Nisaj Patel from twenty-nine Lincoln Street in Winthrop. The next appointment is Lydia Louvella Ramos from Shirley Street in Winthrop. The next appointment is John Bentley. And I think Council DeMarco was instrumental in getting him to come along. I'd like to appoint him. And the final appointment I'm making tonight is Andrea Baez, who is the head of the YMCA in East Boston, but is a longtime resident of Winthrop. I think she lives on Gurrel Stone Road. So those are the appointments for tonight. I hope you approve them, and I'm leaving a couple of appointments open for the next meeting. Hopefully, these people can get together though before the next meeting and, you know, make some suggestions. But I am looking for at least, I believe, three more people with some diversity in their background to put on this committee.
All right, there's a motion on the table. I thought it was five, is this six, Council President, or five nominate, appointment?
That's six.
It is six, I believe it was six, all right? There are six, a motion for advisory committee, community diversity, inclusion, and community relations, to include six people as of now, with three more to come. There's a second by Council Frino, discussion on the motion.
I think we have six good people, six really good people.
Thank you, Council DeMarco, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Council President, back to you.
Okay, I just almost forgot, I have one more appointment, and that is to the, a non-policymaking committee. It is the Winthrop Scholarship Committee. And I would like to appoint Hannah Catherine Belcher of eight ninety-two Shirley Street to that committee. She is of the Belcher family that founded this town.
Second.
Motion on the floor, seconded by Councila Frino. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Council President.
Yes.
Turn the gavel back to you.
Thank you, those are the appointments tonight. As you can see, there are three more appointments that I left open purposefully. If any of the counselors have any suggestions of persons to put on there, or any persons that are out there and listening and would like to apply, please apply because I, I do have some applications in front of me that I'm considering. But I am also willing to consider some people. I was, I don't have anybody on that committee yet that is a disabled person and a couple of the other categories that are there. So please, if you have fit into what Peter has determined to be a Winthrop-protected class, please file an application in the next week, and we'll see if we can get you welcomed and invited onto this committee.
Council President.
Yes.
I think that's it for new business. I'd like to discuss, possibly make an emergency motion, and maybe the town manager could weigh in if we don't need to do this. But I know we have the primaries coming up quickly, and I know the town clerk's office is inundated with a ton of work to get ready. And I know one of the things that, that we're really focusing on is to try to get some voting booths in. We have a voting booth that are in disrepair, unable to really be sanitized on a regular basis. So I know, we're hoping that this is going to be able to be covered with COVID money or CARES Act money. But if that's not available right now, I think this is something that we have to act on quickly. Town manager discussed on just how long it took to get Plexiglas, you know, I don't think this is going to be any different. And is there a need for me not, I mean, maybe Anna or Austin, is there a need for me not to make a motion now? The, the motion was going to be to take forty-five hundred out of council reserve. Hopefully, it will be replaced with CARES money when it comes in, so just that we can get this equipment now.
I'm going to have to defer to Anna on this one.
So I think it would be, I think it would be for the town council to consider Council Luteri's motion on this matter tonight. I have been researching whether or not CARES Act would cover these, this particular cost. It's not clear right now that it would, but it's also not clear that it would not. So in light of the priority, if, if the council would like to ensure that those funds are available for the town clerk to make that purchase, I would recommend making that transfer. And then I will do whatever I can to try to maximize any reimbursement for that purchase. I just don't have a good answer yet. I've been trying with our auditors, and I'm reaching out to the state to see if the, the existing voting booths and the deficiencies where they exist to accommodate COVID nineteen requirements, whether that would be sufficient to validate our need to purchase these new booths. So while I'm awaiting that answer, I just don't want to, I wouldn't want there to be a delay in terms of the process to Council Luteri's point.
So Council President, I'd like to make a motion, then we could discuss it, but I'd like to make an emergency motion to, to take, well, just, well, first I'll make the motion, to take forty-five hundred dollars from the council reserve and transfer it to the town clerk's supply line for the purchase of twenty-one voting booths at a cost of roughly two hundred and ten dollars per booth. But the motion is for forty-five hundred dollars to transfer from council reserve to the town clerk's supply line. And I would like to make that as an emergency motion.
And that's, and that's because it is an issue of public safety to keep people separated while they're voting?
Because if it's not for public safety. It's also an issue to be, to be able to have machines that can be sanitized in a, in a quick timeframe and that are, that are in full repair and that are in good shape. Like the, like Anna's discussed, we're not sure if we're going to be able to reimburse this with CARES money. We are hoping that we are. But to, to avoid any potential delays, I think it's imperative that we pass this now, giving Cala the opportunity to order these booths.
Okay, the first motion would be to take this up as an emergency motion. And that's been seconded, all those in favor of taking this up as an emergency motion, please answer to the roll call, aye.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Okay, second now is the motion to transfer forty-five hundred dollars from council reserve to the town clerk's office, is that correct?
Correct.
Second.
Okay, and further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, all those in favor, please answer yes on the roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher. Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business, there was, somebody else want to make another motion? Hearing none, we'll go over to public comment. And again, the number for public comment is three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine. And then put in the ID number, eight, four, nine, two, four, one, two, one, one, five, seven. I see that we have thirty-nine participants, I guess we've lost a few. Is anybody ready to talk to us on public comment?
I have Nick Bracy that was holding. If you want to unmute yourself.
You there, Nick?
Yep, I'm here.
How you doing?
I'm fine, thank you. This is Nick Bracy of Precinct One. I would just like to ask the town council what the policy is on reading correspondence, whether it should be read in full or if it should be just summarized. Thank you.
Well, it depends, usually summarize most of the letters that we get, they get the person's point across. And usually if a letter is four or five pages long, we don't, don't read the whole thing. That, I don't know what the rest of the council feels, but that's what we've been doing.
So is, what is the policy exactly? I still, I'm not clear, because, because there was a very important, important message being read today.
Okay, the policy is we, that we summarize them and then we put them into the record so that anybody that would like to see what the letter said in its entirety can request it and get it and see it, and they will request the minutes.
I just feel that there's key parts of, of certain letters that were read today that were left out. And being a citizen and a resident of this community, it's important to get all of the key information across to everybody that it affects, which is every single resident in this town.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on public comment?
I have Katrina Donovan.
Hi Katrina, how are you?
There we go, I am all right, thank you. I just wanted to say a few things. First, I wanted to thank Ms. Hurley for her very informative breakdown of COVID cases and what she had done. And also, I noted where she said, you know, we're having quarantine fatigue. And I think that that is a place where the library could help in offering people more and more programming online, giving them more chances to connect online with people. The library is in the business of gathering and disseminating information. And we would really like to help in being part of what Meredith Hurley is doing, what the school committee is doing. We would like to be able to help. Austin mentioned that there's a lot of work, that he's been working a lot of extra hours. We at the library offered to do extra work. We said we could do work from home, and instead we were laid off. There is many things we could be doing. is many things we could be doing, and we would really like the chance to serve the community, and simply come back to the table for negotiations with the town management and our union, so we can have these discussions of how we can help be part of the solution that Winthrop needs in this pandemic.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, we have Karen Chavez.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi Karen.
Don't think I wasn't listening, because I have been. First of all, kudos to Meredith Hurley. What an outstanding presentation she gave, and you know, for her to be so calm, cool and collected, and express about 4th of July weekend, and the whatever happened, I don't know what happened, but by gosh, she really put it out there very, very nicely. Instead of saying to people, you should have behaved yourselves and you didn't, she didn't say that, she was very, very nice about it, and I have to say kudos to her. And as far as your Human Rights Diversity and Inclusion Commission, you know, President Boncory, I think you've made some great choices.
Thank you.
As a lot of you know, I am from a diverse family. I've been married for 56 years, and my husband has always been welcomed in this town, thank goodness, as have my kids, who were born and brought up and still live here, and my grandchildren. And I know there have been issues, and I know that the town manager Faison, you know, commented twice now on the transcript, two different weeks. But I think you have to look at some of the families and what their two, they're in the same predicament that the town manager was in. There's more than one family in this town that have married into an African-American family. I just think that, you know, your choices were just, just great. And as far as the chief is concerned, I'm talking about the chief of police, I don't know what more he can do to help the people at the point. And I don't know what the solution is at Shore Drive, I have no idea, because I don't know what the rules and regs are as far as the DCR is concerned. But if people are parking on the side streets and going up to the beach, I don't know how you can stop them, I really don't. But parking on the landing, that's another issue. And thank you, President Boncory, for recognizing the two deputy harbor masters, one of them being my grandson, Michael Chavez, who was, we had a small graduation party for him on Sunday in my backyard, there was only 10 of us, and he was late because he was doing that rescue. But again, thank you.
You're welcome, Karen.
So we have Kathleen up next. Kathleen, if you want to unmute your phone.
Hello?
Kathleen, are you on? We can. I can come back to her if she wants to raise her hand again. Rich Allen? Rich, do you want to unmute yourself?
I just did. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Rich.
Hello, I'd just like to know that I just checked the Winthrop Public Library website, and there's no mention about curbside service. I don't know if there's been a delay in putting it on the main page, but I did notice several days ago on the library's webpage, I mean, Facebook page about curbside, but there's, right now, there's nothing on, mentioned on the main library webpage about curbside service.
Well, I know that.
I'll check with Diana and get that updated for tomorrow. It's not a problem.
Would you also?
I just noticed on the Mass Musoville Association website that the House of Corrections is offering season towns Plexiglas to be purchased, and you can bypass any bids or anything like that. I mean, there's a cost involved, but they are offering season towns of Plexiglas to be purchased. Also, I'd like to know, ask Austin about what's the current budget situation.
In what sense?
What's, what's happening? Is it still running a deficit, or, I know that the Mass Musoville Association website said season towns are waiting, maybe in September, to find out what the state is doing.
Yeah, we still don't know the state numbers, so we still don't know what our final budget's going to be, because we don't have the state aid numbers locked in yet. They have voted for a 1/12 budget for the months of July and August, so we still don't know what we're going to be getting for a total amount for fiscal '21 yet, so our numbers still aren't locked in.
Well, so what happened, actually, what happened to the money that was diverted from the library budget?
No money has been diverted from the library budget.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just say, really, can I just say really quickly that, um, thank you. So a handful, this is a concern I know among the community, is also a concern among many members of the council. And I think that within the purview of what we can do as counselors to support the library, and what is most important is that we can maintain the commitment that we had given to the library, which was essentially similar funding to what we had given them in previous years, this year and last year. And I think it's important to note that no money as of right now has been diverted away from the library, and that I, we have a majority on the council right now who is committed to not moving that funding. I know that there's a lot of talk in the community that we're, you know, taking, we're going to take savings out of the library budget, which may be associated with disclosure, and use it in other places in our budget, and that's really just not something that I think that there is an appetite to do on the council, and I know that there are six counselors on this, on this body who agree with me on that. So we're committed to funding the library, similarly to how we have in years past, and actually, where we also appropriated money in this past budget to repair the roof. So I know, I can speak for some of us, a majority of us on this council who believe that, who want to continue to fund the library at the same level that we have in previous years, and to the extent that it was funded in this year's budget as well. So that's something that I think that the community should know.
They could be.
Can I have Anna Friedman give a quick comment on that?
Okay.
I think to just provide the community with some clarification on the sort of town administration's priorities for the library. Up on the web, the town's website under Budget, there's a letter there that was submitted by town councilor Faison and myself in May that detailed the projections of the time in May for the upcoming fiscal year. You'll note that we recommended some adjustments to the budget. Those adjustments were largely accepted by the town council. We did not recommend taking large downgrades to the library's budget. I believe we took cuts to all office supplies, or cuts every single department, and things like conference fees that we cannot afford to have employees attending right now, and also, it would not be prudent to have employees attending conferences if they're even being offered. But I think that that just shows that there was, there had, there is no, there's no underlying intent to reduce the appropriation from the town administration for the library. We consciously had recommended keeping that at the level that as recommended previously for personnel in the town manager's original budget, so that to the extent if there was a scenario where some personnel needed to temporarily separate from the town, that those could then come back on as soon as feasible. We did not want to be in a position where the appropriation would not support those folks coming back on as soon as feasible. We have no plan specifically for moving that money around that require a vote of the town council, and that's not something that we are envisioning bringing to the council. We want to retain the library's baseline funding, primarily where it has been, similar to what counselor Christopher noted. So I just wanted to let folks know that, and point out that that letter is there. I'm in the process of updating our online budget based on the council's vote in June, and I hope to have that up very soon, so folks can prove the budget as well. And then as Austin said, we are waiting on the state to put out their budget. I think they're waiting on Congress, unfortunately, to determine if they're going to pass a bill that would help with some revenue issues that states and municipalities are seeing. So we are just unfortunately in uncharted territory. I'm sorry, I think I disappeared, hope you can all hear me, in terms of the finances, and so it's a little bit of a fluid situation. But I just wanted to just underscore that we are on the same page as the town council in terms of an internal administration perspective.
Thank you, Anna. And there is going to be no transfer of money, and there's nothing before the council, so the issue is moot. Is there anyone else online?
Yes, Kathleen's back on. Let's see. Kathleen, are you there?
Hello? Kathleen?
I know her mute is off, I don't.
Okay.
Sure, we have Samantha Bracy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi Samantha, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Great. So I just wanted to build off what was named around the library and just, like misinformation in the community and people, you know, hearing things that aren't necessarily true, and I think that's like a general mentality around town, that they, people don't really know what's going on, they don't know all the information or the right information, and I think that's been a historic problem in Winthrop that many of you are probably aware of. And I think that I have formed relationships with council members that have allowed me a, an avenue to express, you know, my thoughts and hear, like, some of the great work that the council is doing. But I would urge you to think about a larger, broader format to keep people informed. I'm a working mother, for me to sit on a meeting for two hours and wait for public comment that no one's really going to respond to, no matter what I say anyway, is frustrating and is not indicative of any sort of effort from the council to reach out to people, and this definitely doesn't apply to everybody, but it's everyone's responsibility on the committee to make sure that you're reaching all people in the community, you know, and then truthfully, like withholding a public letter that a resident wrote in a meeting intentionally is, you know, a great example of not being transparent with the community. So even the people who stuck out the meeting and stayed on the call for two, three hours, didn't get all the information that they should have gotten from a letter that a, you know, citizen wrote about a concern. So I just wanted to name that. I think that's been an ongoing problem. I don't know if people name that to you, so maybe I'm the first one, but that is definitely something that other people have expressed as well, and so I would urge you to think about ways to bridge the work that you're doing with people in the community, to act in partnership instead of, like, in what is perceived to be opposition from some people. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Anyone else?
Council President, I don't see any. Oh, hold on, Wendy Millar just got in, right under the gun there. Wendy, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there.
Hi Wendy, how are you doing?
I'm extremely very happy after watching this meeting tonight. I want to take a quick moment to applaud all of the council for moving forward with our commission on diversity. Winthrop is ever-growing and changing, and we have the benefit of having such amazing new folks moving into town, and I just think that finding a way to support all of the people in Winthrop on a regular basis is huge. And I just really want to thank everyone who took the time to read it over, put together a really thoughtful and well-defined motion that is so inclusive and creates such a level of protected class citizens in our town. I just wanted to say kudos, thank you, thank you. I am thrilled, and I look forward to seeing some of the changes that this commission will bring forth. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else waiting for public comment?
I don't see anybody. No, sir, I don't see anybody else waiting.
Okay, great, we'll move on then to public relations. Does anybody have anything? Again, I would like to point out, you know, committee applications are available. There's still other committees openings beside the Committee on Diversity, there are some other committee availabilities, so please look online and join us. We'd like to have you part of the solution. Thank you. Anyone else have any announcements? Anything that's going on, any big meetings coming up?
Council President?
Yes.
I would just, again, like to take a second just to congratulate the Winthrop High School seniors on their graduation. It's been, you know, something that they'll obviously never forget. I sounded graduated college this year, but I just think high school is even that much more important to these kids, and they go through so much. It's such an amazing mark in their lives, and it's, it's been kind of turned upside down, and they've made the best of it. And I applaud them for that, and I applaud their parents and congratulate all the families who are graduating this year, and wish them all the best, and hope that whatever they endeavor in the fall turns out well, and they all make Winthrop proud.
It is going to be a historic graduation in the town. Anyone else? If not, all in a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion's been made by Councilor DiMarco, seconded by Councilor Farino. Any, oh, I just got a message from Kathleen Capuccio, who says that nobody could hear her, and she does not know why. She just wanted to share how amazing Meredith Hurley's presentation was. Okay? So that was Kathleen who couldn't get on, and she was trying. Okay, motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, take a roll call, please Denise.
You're on mute.
Denise, you're mute.
Councilor Agiero.
Yes.
Councilor Flacott.
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Christopher.
Yeah.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor Farino.
Yes.
Councilor LaConte. Council, Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I want to thank you all for your patience. That was two hours, it's a lot better than last time, but we still got to get it back to an hour. Okay, thank you all very much for your patience. Please be safe. Winthrop, please be safe. Follow the rules. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.